Be in our Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lauren, you want to do roll call, please?
Absolutely. Chairman David Leland.
Here.
Vice Chair Ross Sillingford. Commissioner June Perrin.
Here.
Commissioner Philip Markey.
Here.
Commissioner Ray Nazareth.
Here.
Adam Miller as alternate one.
Here.
And Gary Speck as alternate two.
Okay, tonight we're going to be doing our local planning agency meeting first. Is there, well, we need to get anyone sworn in who's going to be talking.
Yes, sir. And just for the record, just let the record reflect that the approval of the minutes is being deferred till next month. It's an agenda item on your agenda, but the minutes were not ready in time. If we could have the applicant come forward, if you could raise your right hand for me, both of you. This is quasi judicial. Do you swear from to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. I'll turn back to the board and ask if there are any ex parte, the commission rather, and ask if there are any ex parte communications with regard to application 19-0087 that need to be disclosed.
No.
Thank you.
Okay, so the one and only item we have tonight is application number 19-0087RZ. And as I understand it, Kevin, you're just going to go ahead and read it for us.
I am. In reviewing rezonings, the local planning agency should consider the following: consistency of the proposed changes with the elements of the comprehensive plan, consistency with the vision for the future of the village, compliance with state law, and whether the action requested will exacerbate any existing public facility capacity deficits as described in the traffic circulation element, sanitary sewer, solid waste, drainage, potable water element, and recreation and open space element of the comprehensive plan. As far as consistency of the proposed changes with the elements of the comprehensive plan, the proposed rezoning will be consistent with the comprehensive plan because the proposed rezoning to the, sorry, not general commercial zoning district, but private, her public ownership zoning district, is a compatible zoning district for the open space land use. It is also consistent with the open space site development standards, or actually, public ownership site development standards, and the evaluation of consistency with individual elements of the village's comprehensive plan were already evaluated at the time the open space land use designation was assigned to the properties. The site is highlighted in red. It's in the lower east corner of the property. It's Pod 8, and it is to be turned over to the village as a public park in the future by the developer. They are rezoning 13.144 acres of that, approximately 10.7 acres is the actual park area, and the remainder is a part of the FPNL utility easement. Consistency with the vision for the future of the village. The proposed rezoning to change the zoning of the subject site will be consistent with the village's comprehensive plan, general planning principles, and village code requirements. Upon adoption of the pending future land use, we already adopted that, rezoning will provide for a village zoning district that is consistent with the approved open space land use and the public ownership rezoning, sorry, will allow for the construction of the proposed roadway. Oh, that was from a previous one, excuse me. I think I have the wrong presentation, actually. That's the right one. Okay, let me keep going then. The proposed rezoning is also consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council Strategic Regional Policy Plan to support sustainable development patterns. Village staff generally agrees with the applicant's assertions regarding compliance with the village's comprehensive plan, village code, and state statutes. Overall, the proposed rezoning is generally consistent with the village's comprehensive plan, compatible with adjacent land uses, and meets all relevant concurrency level of service standards, and therefore, staff is recommending approval of the rezoning. Again, the park is part of the dedication requirements for the multifamily as well as single-family developments that are part of the master plan. It represents approximately 50% of what they're required to provide. And again, village staff is recommending approval. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, the applicant is here and has a presentation if you'd like to hear.
Do you wish to?
No, I mean, I think Kevin did a fine job. I'm here to answer any questions if you have them.
Just get your name on the record.
Ally Palmer for the record, sorry.
Do we have any comments from the public? Okay, then I will then go to our comments or questions from our commissioners, Ray?
None at this time.
I have none.
No comments or questions?
No comments.
That was easy. All right, well, with all that said, can I have a motion to approve application number 19-0087RZ?
I'll make a motion to approve application 19-0087RZ, as is...
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries five zero. And that will end our planning and zoning, or our local planning agency meeting. Our next meeting will be on October 22nd. Type over our paperwork. So we'll adjourn that meeting and go on to our planning and zoning meeting. Again, we're going to defer the minutes to next month because we have not been able to see them and review them.
We're going to do roll call again, Middy?
Mm-hmm. You can just let the record reflect that the same commissioners are on the dais.
Same commissioners are here for the planning and zoning meeting and agenda for September 24th, 2019.
And our items for discussion, first one is the application number 19-0066AAR. Kevin?
If you'll direct your attention to the monitor, the site is highlighted in blue.
Kevin, can I interrupt you before you get further? Let me swear everybody in, so we get everybody sworn in on the record. Everybody who is speaking tonight on any of the items on tonight's agenda, if you could stand and raise your right hands for me? Yeah, everybody who's going to be speaking. If you're, if you're an applicant, if you're just from the public, you don't need to be sworn in. Thank you. These are all quasi judicial hearing matters, agenda items, so do you swear from to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Thank you, Kevin. Yeah, I'll do it after your presentation.
Okay, so the height is, the site is highlighted in blue. It is in the RM 18 zoning district. You should be familiar with this site because they've had several applications before you recently repainting signage, awnings for over the windows. The subject of this application is the stairwell breezeways, which they are putting Bahama-type awnings or shutters or railings, whatever you would like to call them, on the second and third floors. They are jet black. They will match the color of the awnings that you approved over the windows and the color of the railings in general. Village staff has reviewed it, and we are in support of the application. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
And if we could, before the applicant comes to the podium for their presentation, if I could turn back to the commission and ask if there are any ex parte communications with regard to 19-0066 that need to be disclosed?
No.
Thank you.
Is the applicant present?
I am.
Would you like to present? Yes? Please state your name first.
Charlie. My name is Nick Albero. I am with a company called Excel Consultants. I serve in the capacity of resident engineer with that company. We have been engaged by the owner of this property, a company called American Landmark, one of the larger aggregators, multifamily properties across the state of Florida, as well as other metropolitan statistical areas throughout Georgia, North Carolina, Tennessee. This particular property was purchased by the client in effort to, if you will, establish a marquee property within the Palm Beaches. And as such, they have dedicated an incredible amount of capital after the purchase, both on capital improvements associated with the inside of every one of the units, as well as the outside of the property. Inside, improvements have ranged from new casework doors, new flooring, new appliances across the board, obviously, new coatings on all interior walls, that's easy, but granite countertops, new appliance, new electrical fixtures, plumbing fixtures. Exterior capital improvements were a major deal, and that's a bit of a parter for this particular client because normally, first year after acquisition, you need funds from operations to offset the initial capital improvements. In this particular case, they pulled out all the proverbial stops, wanted to make, as I mentioned, a key statement to compete with some of the newer properties that are just right outside the village. Those particular capital improvements started off, as Kevin mentioned, with recoding the entire exterior of each of the nine structures across the property. In addition to that, the client saw fit to go ahead and make investments in louvered window shades, awnings, whatever term you want to use. Those are part aesthetic and part functional, given the fact that while it doesn't cover enough of the window to dramatically offset the amount of heat generated by the sun, it does help. In tandem with that, they've decided to go ahead and, rather, the client's decided to go ahead and modify the breezeways. The particular rectangular openings are an eyesore. They look like a bunch of gap teeth to the chief executive, who effectively calls all the shots. So my challenge was to convene a couple of design charrettes with the architect and the subcontractor who fabricates these things, and try to come up with something that the owner would find appealing, but at the same time, planning and zoning department would find equally acceptable. So after a couple of false starts with producing what I like, euphemistically, I like to refer to as an ugly baby, we finally got the client to see, if you will, what planning and zoning thought would represent something acceptable. So as such, we're moving forward with what's called a high visibility shutter. This is on the approved product list, having been evaluated by the Department of Business and Professional Regulation at the state level. So as such, from a testing and evaluation standpoint, that's all been complete. The only engineering we really have to do as far as the installation is how we're going to support these on horizontal span tubes that bridge the two sheer walls on either side of the breezeway opening, and that's really not the biggest stretch. So our, my, my major concern as both the, a professional engineer and certified general contractor with my company is that we don't want to put anything up that's going to, you know, have in any way, shape, or form be in danger of a projectile, even in a Cat 5 hurricane. So as such, the design of both the louver attachments, as well as the attachments for these particular high visibility shutters are with a factor safety easily of 2.5, if not 3. So that means we've overdesigned them by a factor of about 2.5x to 3x. As Kevin mentioned, the patina is going to match the existing railings, which we haven't touched, but equally, they're, more importantly, they're going to match that of the louvered window shades. Yeah, black, not a whole lot of imagination there, but we really didn't have a whole lot of latitude, given the color schema that the client chose for the exterior facade of each building. Other than that, our fabrication subcontractor is stellar, having been in business in quote-unquote hurricane management fixtures for well over 15 years. He's primarily, he does a lot of work down in the Florida Keys. While he doesn't do that much commercial work, I think he's well up to matching, if you will, the integrity of the installation shown so far on the louvered window shades, which, interestingly enough, we're about ready to wrap up. Questions? Concerns?
First of all, do we have any comments from the public? Then I will turn to the commissioners to see if there are any questions, Ray?
I was going to ask you, Nick, right?
Yes.
You have any pictures? Because it sounds like you, you mentioned you spent a lot of money, and you really brought this around, you know? Personally, I'm impressed with what you did, and also, you, to compete with the newer properties. I was just trying to get an idea of the before and after, but that's okay. Also, what was the most significant impact you made? Because you mentioned a lot of impacts.
I'm sorry, impacts of what?
The most significant impact. In other words, what really brought this around, this project of yours?
Well, first and foremost, the client wanted to embrace a wood grain patina and texture. We initially started off, believe it or not, with teak, not teak, uh...
Cedar?
Cedar, thank you.
Cedar, right.
So we wanted a cedar, cedar slats going across this thing. And of course, I was a nonstarter from day one, because I'm like, look, there's no way in heck that we're going to be able to attach cedar to even a concrete masonry unit and have it not be in danger of becoming an airborne projectile.
Right.
Then we went with, okay, Plan B, which was an aluminum substrate, but if you will, embossed with a wood grain. Client, client's like, yeah, that's what I want. Well, that's where the ugly baby adventure started. And I'll never forget, it was right before July 4th, I met Lauren and Kevin with the initial submission. Both of them looked at me with a very quizzical expression on their face, going, Nick, are you serious? And unfortunately, as a consultant, often you can try to lead your client, and perhaps sometimes tug, get him to go in the right direction, but until we got a definitive no-go from the planning and review commission, the client was effectively intransient in his vision, if you will, of what he wanted this thing to be. Bottom line is, even the design agent and charrettes was trying to make the client understand that, look, you don't have any other wood surfaces on the side of this building. What are you trying to do? Ah, client's like, I want it. Hey, it's a C-level officer, so mine is not the reason why. So, long story short, when we went through the debrief of the planning and zoning staff review, Kevin was kind enough to share with me that, look, if you bring to us something that was close to what you originally proposed...
Yeah.
Unbelievably, we, we did, we screwed it up. We actually had the plantation shutters on the same architectural rendering that the louvers were on. And it was kind of like good news, bad news. Why not, you know, had to go back and redo it and lost four weeks, but at least it gave Kevin an idea of what he thought was going to be able to sell. So we went back to the client and gave him three options, two of which were high visibility shutters, and again, the, the name comes from high visibility because the way the louvers are oriented, to maximize natural light as well as air, ambient airflow. So long story, so client's concern was, I don't want to make each one of the breezeways into a hothouse. That's dark.
Exactly.
Well, the high visibility shutter doesn't do it. Now, those louvers over the windows, they're not quote-unquote functional. In other words, you can't collapse them. They have an angle of inclination. It's 30 degrees from the vertical face of the building. They're more of a shade. It's not a quote-unquote functional Bahama shutter, which is what we wanted our client to more embrace, covering more of the window, to create more of a, obviously not a building that's going to be a LEED-certified candidate, but at least something that would reduce, if you will, the amount of heat generated in each one of the apartments through just, you know, the natural sunlight. You see a lot of that across the village. Interestingly enough, that's where the client got his inspiration for what he wanted to do here on this property. Just driving around the village and looking at all the other commercial buildings, some of which have, you know, the shorter versions, other have full length, some are half length. So he, luckily for us, opted on what we chose as the best, if you will, of the three non-appalling options for him. Doing handrails right across those openings with, you know, it's lipstick on a pig. It's, I think, the terminology we used when we gave...
Thank you, Nick.
So, we think it's a great product. Again, it's, it's functional to the point where it maximizes, as mentioned, you know, the ambient light and natural airflow, but at the same time, gives the client the aesthetic appeal that he's looking for. And short of taking out the entire wall between the two sheer opening, two sheer walls, and just making that one giant louvered assembly, louvered shutter assembly, this is about the best that we could come up with.
Thank you.
Did I answer your question?
Yes, you did. I want to commend you and the staff for working well together. Okay.
Philip?
Only question I have is, is this on both ends or just what's on, show up on the road?
No, we're not doing every, good question. We're not doing every breezeway. We're doing, there's nine buildings, nine apartment buildings, and then there's the office. Two of the buildings we're doing both sides. The other buildings we're just doing one side. And again, that is going to be, that will be augmented next year in their capital improvements plan. And the way that works is, they make the improvements interior and exterior, they bump up the rent justified by the nature of those improvements, and then the additional funds from operations in turn allows for bottling capital improvements that in turn, so it's cyclic, that in turn will allow for a more competitive presentation. As I mentioned, they're very, very conscious of both the new properties and existing properties that have gotten faceless. So it's all about, gee, making this property stand out and be one that, you know, definitely resonates. So, answered your question, I'm sorry. So you take nine buildings, multiply them by two, and you've got 18 building facades. We're doing 11.
Thank you. I just have one concern. I just like the fact that you are taking the concerns of the citizen, they have the residents in, for their protection during hurricane season, and also the, the looks of the hurricane shutters to improve the visibility of the buildings, which I think is a very nice aspect of it all. That's very good. I thank you for that. Keeping the building beautiful in Royal Palm Beach, which we, which we always try to keep improving. Thank you.
That's very kind of you to say that.
That's not a problem.
This, we're always, this commission is always in favor of improvements, and we understand, in this case, you've got to have income too to finish everything up, so that makes sense.
All out funds from operations.
Absolutely. Mr. R?
It looks nice, thank you.
Appreciate that. It was not without a small amount of effort.
My closing comment, it's just interesting when you've got a client that's entrenched. And again, you know, it's his money, it's his property. By nature of what our company does, we consult. What does a consultant consult? Ah, well, you know, sometimes it's one of the, the principal thing we try to do is get our client to question their own assumptions.
Right.
And in this particular case, because of Kevin's stewardship along with Lauren, giving me the reaction right before the Fourth of July that ain't no how, no way.
Thank you so much. Awesome.
Thank you.
Very good presentation. Thank you.
All right, with all that said, are there any further questions? No? And can I get a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve 19-0066. That's your project.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Good luck. Okay. Okay, the second item on our agenda tonight is application number 19-0052. Middy?
Sure, and before Kevin gives his presentation, I'll ask if there are any ex parte communications with regard to 19-0052 that need to be disclosed?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, if you'll direct your attention to the monitor, the subject site is 2493 West Mont Lane. The applicant, Mr. Fioli, is requesting three variances from section 2679, setbacks for three existing permanent awning structures to allow the following. A, a reduced side setback of 11 inches where code requires seven and a half feet, and a reduced rear setback of 11 feet, 11 inches where village code requires 15 for the southeastern awning structure. B, a reduced side setback of 11 inches where the village code requires seven and a half, and a reduced rear setback of 11 inches where village code requires 15 for the southwestern awning structure, and a reduced side setback of 11 inches where village code requires seven and a half for the western awning structure. And village code provides for granting a variance. There are seven criteria. Special conditions and circumstances should exist which are peculiar to the land, structure, or building involved. It should not result from the actions of the applicant. It should not confer on the applicant any special privilege that is denied by the zoning ordinance to other lands, buildings, or structures in the same district. A literal interpretation of the provisions of this division should, would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties. The variance granted is a minimum variance that will make possible the reasonable use of the land, building, or structure, and it should be in harmony with the general intent and purpose of the zoning code, and it should not be injurious to the area involved or otherwise detrimental to the public welfare. Having said that, the applicant has provided a survey which shows the locations with X's where the awnings are located. There are two on the left side and one on the right bottom corner. And this is a picture from, I assume, the roadway of one of the awning structures, and this is a picture of the support structure and how that is put together for the three awnings. The applicant has asserted that the reduced setback is necessary because of the layout of all the existing structures on the property. In particular, the applicant states that the layout of the existing pool would not allow for the proposed structures to comply with the required setbacks, and the applicant contends that the medication that their son is taking causes sun sensitivity and that the shade structures are necessary to allow him to enjoy the backyard and pool area. The applicant further asserts that this is the minimum variance that will allow for reasonable use of the property and prevent village code from denying the applicant an amenity, an amenity commonly enjoyed by other property owners. amenity commonly enjoyed by other property owners. Village staff is not in support of these variances because staff believes that no special conditions or circumstances exist which are not applicable to other lands, that conditions result from actions of the applicant, and it would confer on the applicant special privileges that are denied to other lands, and that the literal interpretation of the code does not deprive the applicant the right enjoyed by other lands in the same district. And it's not, also not the minimum variance necessary for reasonable use of the land. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. The applicant is here as well, if you want a presentation.
Kevin, we understand that the structure is up.
The structures are up.
And were permits pulled? I would assume not.
That I do not know. Do you recall, Mitty?
I don't recall.
Is this a code case, though?
Yeah, but because of the setback, not because of work without a permit, is my recollection, but.
Is the applicant present? Would you like to?
Yes.
Please state your name.
My name is Michael Fioli, and this is my wife Cindy Fioli. So, I'm, we had put up these structures, we had, were approved by the Association of Madison Green. We applied for three structures and they approved it, and they came down and inspected it. And, I mean, we have a son who's physically and mentally challenged, and we can't have him in sunlight, so the backyard is basically null and void for him. And we put these structures up, and we're in, I mean, the construction business, we built everything fire-rated material, powder-coated, aluminum-mounted it with anchors in the ground. It's sound and perfect, and we even remove it prior to storms. We take it down and put it secure in our garage every, you know, anytime there's a storm warning. And, and the town came to us and said, we noticed this from the side of the road, and we didn't know that we had to run it through the town. We thought we just had to run it through the association. So, we applied to our neighbors diligently with Lauren and the whole team, and, you know, had sent out 300 feet, 60 members in the association. Our house has been nominated and it's stellar, and it's, we're always over-manicured and take care of our community and love Madison Green. This is a home that we're going to retire in, and we're not selling it. We have six children, five boys and a girl, and, you know, this is what we've done, and we spent a lot of money on this. And, you know, that's where we're at.
Are there any comments from the public, neighbors? Okay. Questions? Adam?
I do not have any.
Jim?
And you did, you did have this approved by the homeowners' association first?
Yes, they approved it.
And did they, did they mention to you that you should have checked with the village when they?
They just sent us an approval. We applied, we paid a fee, they sent an approval to us, and we thought it was fine. And five months later, six months later, we had a door knocker on our door saying, hey, this isn't correct. And it cost us $11,000. And we were like, why? We don't understand, you know? And, I mean, basically, it's just a great hardship to keep your children inside. We have a pool, and we, our neighbors, you know, we're wonderful neighbors, and we get along with all our neighbors, and there's no complaints. I mean, you know, they even came over when they got their letters in the mail.
And I see the neighbors that submitted the letters, they live around you, so they had no issues or problems with the awnings?
No, no, they, we're real.
Neighbors wrote letters for us.
Neighbors wrote letters for us. We have signatures of all the community saying that it's an enhancement, it's, you know, looks beautiful, and we're just good neighbors and, you know, we don't, we just believe in taking care of our homes and the community.
I can understand, I can understand. Thank you.
Philip?
I have no comment.
Ray?
I have a question, Michael or Cindy. You said your son needs, special needs, right? Do you have like the doctors or medical?
Yes.
You have it all, and then the neighbors don't object?
No.
And you didn't know? I mean, to me, it, it sounds like you're a victim in a way, you know, of?
We didn't know.
Yeah, you didn't know, I mean, yeah.
And the medication that my son takes prevents him from being in the sun, direct sunlight. So, that, you know, and he needs the medication to rest or survive.
We redid our front yard, we went for an approval, it was approved. We restamped our driveway, made it look like cobblestone, it was approved. We removed our trees, it was approved. We followed every guidelines of Madison Green, and we've never, you know, did anything, I mean, anything. And the house has been on a sign in the years, at least three times a year, for the most pristine house in the neighborhood.
Because you're an advocate for your son in a way, right? And you're trying to protect his, or basically protecting him from, because of his health care, you know, I mean, and I commend you for that. And I was thinking, are there any federal or state laws that trump our municipal? Because it sounds like you're on the right, you know, you're fighting for the right cause here. I mean, I personally think that.
We, as a parent, we say, you know, you know, we have a pool in our backyard.
Yeah.
And we have family over, we have a lot of kids, we have people, we have neighbors.
We have a lot of grandchildren.
And they can't come out, he can't come out in the backyard.
I know.
So, we put a canopy, you know, in the seating area. We put a canopy, you know, by the table.
Yeah.
And we didn't just put a pop-up tent, you know, we put fire-rated, we had a licensed contractor on awning, you know, right?
You played by the rules.
Played by the rules, and we submitted it. If they would have said, no, it's not allowed, we would have never built it. I would have never went into my pocket for all this.
Right.
So, we built it, and five months later, here we go saying, it's not correct. And we've, you know, it's just important to our child, too, you know, it's a big deal. He can go outside, he can sit outside, you know, he can splash in the water and run. It's just, it's a whole procedure. I'm sorry, but it's just, that's the way it is.
Because what I'm thinking here is, we had a similar situation where the homeowner, like yourself, did not know, and it's like Madison Green, which is where you live, they approved it. And, you know, a good question was, well, why didn't they send you to the village? So, really, you tried to cover all bases here, you know, from every angle.
We did, we did. And we just didn't know.
Yeah.
And after it was built and it was installed, I mean, we actually, you know, we got a door knocker and we got a notice, and we're like, why? I don't understand. They never told us, we had to go apply for this. And as soon as they did, we did everything according to the.
To comply.
Commission, everything, everything that you guys needed. So, we're grateful and at your mercy for approval.
Okay. Thank you, that's, that's all I have.
Well, the reason staff is suggesting that this not be approved is for obvious reasons, because it didn't go through the proper channels. And it sets a precedent for other structures of its kind going up. And, you know, I'd have to defer to Kevin, but we've had these situations come up before, you know, nobody's trying to pick on you. It's just, what happens is when you ask for that kind of variance, what happens if your neighbor behind you asks for it? All of a sudden, we've got a tense city, you know? I don't ever see it happening, but that's why rules are in place for this type of thing. I don't particularly have a problem with it, especially when you have a special needs child, but I'll defer to our commissioners, you know, we'll defer to see if we get, Kevin, do you have anything else to add to that?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that variances are considered on an individual basis. They don't necessarily set precedent, but like if you were to approve 50 of the same variance, then, you know, it might approach something like that, but each variance is judged on its own merits. So, there, there is really truly no, no precedence unless, you know, you grant the same variance over and over and over again ad nauseam.
Right, and the only thing I'll add to that, which Kevin very eloquently said, is that any application that comes before you for a variance, you are to apply the criteria that are on the screen before you to that individual application and evaluate whether those criteria are met based on the facts for each case before you.
All right. No further questions from the commission? Then I put it before you. Can I get a? This is a tough one.
I'd like to make a motion to approve your variance. Michael and Cindy.
I'll second that.
Second?
Okay, go ahead, Adam.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries five zero. Congratulations.
Thank you. Take care of your son.
Still has to go before the village council for final approval, just so everybody in the room is aware.
You made it through the first step.
We got your back.
And I would just, I'd just like to say that when you go in front of the village council, I'm sure they'll have all these letters and the notes from the doctors and carry all of this with you. As backup documentation to the council, okay?
Okay.
All right?
Thank you so much.
Don't give up.
Okay, very good.
Okay, on, on this next application, which is number 19-0059 VAR, staff is going to make their presentation, and I would direct our commissioners, and any questions that you have, you'll direct them to staff rather than the individuals.
And the only thing I'll add, thank you, Chairman, the only thing I'll add is that this, the reason the address is not listed on this application is because this is a confidential record, so we cannot disclose the address. As the chairman said, if you could direct questions to staff, they would be happy to answer them based on what the applicant submitted as part of this, this request before you. And before Kevin gives his presentation, I'll ask you if there are any ex parte communications with regard to 19-0059 that need to be disclosed? No. Thank you.
Okay, since we just had a variance, I trust that you remember the criteria that I read off to you, and it'll probably be covered in my staff report anyway, again. We are not disclosing the owner or the address, so I don't have a visual for where it's located. This is a portion of the survey, which has, we obscured lot numbers and so forth so that nobody would guess where it is or whatever. What they're asking for is a pool setback of 8.18 feet for the rear yard setback in lieu of the required 13-foot rear yard setback for a swimming pool. The applicant is seeking a 4.82, 4.82-foot variance to the rear setback requirements as established in Code Section 2662D. And the applicant is asserting that the reduced setback is necessary in order to allow for the construction of a 10-foot wide pool. The pool as proposed is smaller than a standard-sized pool, which is approximately 15 by 30 feet. The applicant further asserts that this is the minimum variance that will allow for reasonable use of the property and prevent village code from denying the applicant an amenity commonly enjoyed by other property owners. Village staff does not support the applicant's variance request because staff contends that the granting of the variance would confer on the applicant privileges denied to other residents in similar circumstances. Although this property is not located within a planned unit development, reduced setbacks from the code requirement of 13 feet have been granted as part of PUD approvals in the past. For example, the rear setbacks for Anthony Grove's PUD and Nautical Lake's PUD have been reduced to eight feet or less. And then village code allows for variances for the seven criteria reasons. Staff recommends a request for denial be submitted to the village council regarding application 1959 variance and variance order 19-10. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Well, the applicant is not here.
The applicant is not making a presentation.
Not making a presentation. And are there any comments from the public?
If you could approach the podium, sir, and state your name and address for the record?
So, I have to state the address? My name is Alan Siegel. I reside at 151 Roy Court Circle in the Huntington Woods subdivision. I've lived there since 19, the end of 88, beginning of 89, as far as that. And to make things consistent, that drawing that was up there, I had a similar drawing back in 1994, I believe it was, of adding a pool to my backyard, and we only needed less than a foot for variance. And back then, all, the notices went out, just like this one did, except it passed my name and address across to everybody, all my neighbors knew, and the village turned it down. And we had specific reasons for that, that had to do with health care as well as an elderly person. Since I've lived there as long as I have, I've seen variance after variance denied to protect the property values in the development. There were those who have lots that are big enough to put a pool in without a variance, and then there's those like myself who would have needed a variance. I request that the zoning commission deny the variance on behalf of myself and a few of my other neighbors who unfortunately could not make it because they're at meetings out of town right now. So, as far as that, I'm thankful that my meeting got canceled so I can be here at your meeting, as far as that. Any questions with me?
So, are you here on behalf of yourself because you were denied, so you feel you should be denied?
I was on behalf of myself and of another resident specific who gave me permission to use her address, which is 147 Roy Court Circle in Huntington Woods as well. Do you need her name?
No, I don't believe we do at this time.
All right. As far as that, so we would just want to see consistency. You guys have been very consistent in the past of denying variances for pools in particular as far as that, and we just want to see that you continue the consistency as far as that.
Thank you.
We don't see the need.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I'll defer to Commissioner. Any questions for staff? Adam?
Have there been other variances similar to this?
There have been occasional approved variances. I don't know about this particular neighborhood, but throughout the village, there has been a tendency.
I'm asking your name, right?
Right. There has been a tendency for some of the variances to be approved recently, even though staff recommends denial.
Thank you.
Jim?
Gentlemen, I'd like to ask your question. Could you please come back up? And I'm sorry, I forgot your first name.
Alan.
Alan, hi, Alan. Alan, you obviously live near this person that's going to install this pool, and I just wanted to ask you, is having this pool installed on this person's property going to cause any hardship to you, your family, or your property?
Since I can't identify where it's going, I'd have to say yes at this point until I know where it's really going.
Okay. But, and it will also cause hardship on your neighbors surrounding this property?
Yes.
Okay.
But she told me the same thing. We agree with staff, by the way.
And what type of particular hardship are we talking about? I mean, is it going to be?
I'm sorry.
Because what kind of hardship is it going to cause on your property?
Well, we don't, we don't know, is this a hardship for, when I did mine back in 94, it was for a specific medical reason in an elderly person. Okay? I don't know the reason as to why this is being put in, if it's for entertainment purposes. I'm not sure I'd want the noise. I have enough noisy people near me to, as, as it goes.
Are you, are you upset because your pool was not approved in 1994 and the possibility that this one could or could not be approved? Does that, is that what causing the difficulty for you?
I'm going by the consistency of the fact that, since I've been there so long, I know of about seven other denials.
In Huntington Woods?
In Huntington Woods, yes.
Very interesting. I live in Huntington Woods also.
You live in Huntington Woods?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So, no.
Thank you.
All the, you know, the different sizes of the property. Some are big enough to do a pool, others would have to, we don't know what the purpose of this is. Like I said, I'd like to know what the purpose is.
Do you have a fence around your property?
Yes, I do.
You do have a fence around your property, okay.
Well, it's partial fence, part of it belongs to my neighbor, who unfortunately took his part down, so I don't have, I don't have a total around everything, so.
All right. And a fence would be on that portion next to the property that's going to be building the pool, I guess?
Yeah, I can, I can see the other two houses down from my property since that piece of fence was removed. It was knocked down by a storm.
Commissioner Perrin? We don't want to ask too many vocational questions because it's a confidential record.
Yeah, and the only thing I will add is, although there's discussion about past precedent, as Kevin stated and I tried to clarify earlier, each variance application that comes before you should be evaluated based on the facts that are before you in the application that is before you tonight. Although you can hear about other, you know, past precedent and past behavior, please remember that you are tonight, you're tasked with applying those variance criteria to the application. the application that is before you.
Thank you.
Phillip? Did you have any questions for the?
No, I don't. No.
Ray?
No, no questions. You answered all my questions.
Any comments, Phillip?
Kevin, I have a question for you. You said staff is basically looking to deny this application, right? And can you go over it again one more time? I just want to make sure. There's a couple of things I missed there.
Okay, well, one of the primary reasons is, is that as the gentleman that just spoke said, he was denied this amenity many years ago. You know, councils come and go, people change on the council, and, you know, some are more lenient and some are more, more strict with the code. So, you know, staff has, staff and this board has no control over that. They're the final decision-makers, they're elected by the people. Having said that, staff takes the view of the code and the criteria. We look at it technically. So, is this an odd-shaped piece of property that, that requires them to have a variance setback for the pool because there's no way to fit it in because of odd angles of lots or whatever? No, it's pretty much rectangular.
Yeah.
Did one of the persons in the line of title decide at the point when they built the structure that they'd rather have a larger home and do without a shed or a pool or a place that, possibly? So, you know, when you take into the account, is this the fault of the applicant? The applicant is not only the present owner, but all previous owners as well. Because there are signs of the original owner. So, you know, technically, it doesn't meet the criteria. If you grant this variance, then this guy who doesn't have room for a pool is getting a pool where people who don't ask are not.
Thank you.
And some people who have asked do not.
Okay. That's all I need, thank you.
So, yes, with that said, and with the limited information we're supplied here, we don't have the homeowner speaking, I kinda side with staff myself. Please.
You can, you don't, you don't need to state your name or address, obviously, for the record.
How you guys doing? Sure. So I just want to start off by saying, obviously, I live in Huntington Woods. I'm 30 years old, I've lived in Royal Palm Beach for 30 years. My parents have been here for 35 years. I was born and raised here, went to elementary school here, went to elementary school, H.L. Johnson, Reddick College Street, Crestwood. I took in a profession, obviously, that's confidential, so I decided to move back to Royal Palm, start a family, because I grew up in Royal Palm, I love everything about it. When my wife and I were, were looking to buy homes, we really wanted to come back to Royal Palm and raise our kids, we found this home, it was everything we loved but didn't have a pool. First thing the realtor said is you can always build a pool. Didn't, I didn't think anything, I had no idea about setbacks or, you know, you go in my backyard, it's big enough for a pool. You look at it. I go to some people's homes and it's half the backyard and they have pools. I had no idea, so we, obviously, we had a child, he's two years old, he's starting swim lessons. It's something that I feel is necessity for him growing up, especially if he has siblings. I have two nieces, you know, quality of life, it's the biggest reason why we moved to Royal Palm Beach. I love it here, my parents have been here forever, my brother lived here, so that's pretty much all I have to say. That's our reasoning for it, just so you guys are aware.
So are you speaking on behalf? This has really been convoluted tonight.
I'm the homeowner, yes.
Yes, you're a home, different homeowner.
No, I'm the homeowner.
He is the homeowner.
You are the homeowner.
He is the one, yeah.
Yes, that's the one at this corner.
And my, my property's fully fenced in, nobody can see in or out. I just put a brand-new fence, not even a year ago, so the whole, I'm worried about them actually taking the fence down, I just paid all the money for it, but it's a brand-new fence, nobody can see in and out of my property, it's not gonna affect anybody. It's my, me and my wife and a two-year-old. We're not throwing parties, I have a very important profession, I'm not a 20-year-old party, and it's, it's a family environment. My, my parents live in Royal Palm, they actually live in Huntington Woods, we grew up there, we love the neighborhood. I plan on sending my kids to school in Royal Palm Beach, but, you know, this is something that I did not foresee coming. When you buy a home and they sell you on a home, and you go out back and the backyard is plenty big for a pool, and I was unaware of, I didn't, you know, didn't know about setbacks and everything, so trying to build a pool.
With that said, we were talking of not asking questions to.
Right.
Correct? So, I'm gonna throw it back at the commissioners then. This is very strange.
Well, we appreciate all of the efforts of law enforcement, firefighters, everybody that, that has the right under state law to be a confidential record holder.
Of course.
However, it, it doesn't have any bearing on the criteria or the property, you know, we appreciate their service, but at the same time, it, it has nothing to do with the criteria.
And, you know, we're all caught at one time or another with having to follow. I can give you a perfect example of something that happened to me. I've been a resident in the village in the same house for over 26 years, and at the time when I moved from my old house, I had a, a large Ted Shed. Ted Shed's no longer in business. I paid them to move it from my old property to my new. Thought everything was taken care of. Speed ahead 25 years later, hurricane takes out my privacy fence and code enforcement sees that I have a shed back there that never was approved. It's either move it out of the setback or remove it. So I was faced with the same predicament, not unlike other people we've talked to. Variances are given, I could have gone before the board and asked for one, and I didn't because I was planning on removing it anyway. But, you know, there's, and anything, and I was neglecting not telling that to the last person, that this is a commission and we make recommendations to the council, and staff makes recommendations to us. We can decide whatever we want, doesn't mean that it's going to uphold, because it still has to go before council. So as long as you're aware of that, too.
I'd like to make an approval, please. I'd like to.
A motion?
A motion to make approval for application 19-0059, as is.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I'll have to oppose it.
I'm against it, too.
Yeah.
So, motion passes 3-2 then.
Yeah.
Thank you, enjoy.
Good luck.
And again, I just remind you that you still have to go before village council, both of you, actually, and so that you passed your first hurdle here, but you still have to go before council, so.
And that is on the 27th of October?
That is this October 17th.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth. Don't forget, yeah.
And just make sure you take all documentations and backup and anything else with you, as you brought here.
Yeah, anything that you've got. I noticed in your application, for instance, you had a kind of a canned letter that was from all your neighbors and things, but, you know, if you can get some neighbors to show up, that would probably help your case, too. Same for you.
Or even like write their own letters, which is good also, and their little handwriting, that's good also, okay?
Okay. Okay, it takes us down to item number four on the agenda tonight, which is 19-046 VAR.
Thank you. Before Kevin proceeds, I will ask if there are any ex parte communications with regard to 19-046 that need to be disclosed.
No.
Thank you.
Okay, we're on a roll here. This is variance number three on the agenda tonight. I trust that you recall the criteria that we are using. The applicant is requesting a variance from section 2657 for a shed to allow for a side setback of 4.9 feet in lieu of the seven-and-a-half-foot side yard setback required by code. The property is located at 10-627 Misty Lane, it's highlighted in blue. The applicant has asserted that the shed is needed in the current location in order to allow access to the neighborhood watch golf cart, which will be stored within the proposed shed. The address where the golf cart will be stored is the neighborhood watch captain's home, and it has been stated that other watch members will use the golf cart, too. The proposed location is the most convenient location and will cause the least disturbance for the owners of the property when other watch members need to have access to the cart. The applicant further asserts that this is the minimum variance which will allow reasonable access and safety for the neighborhood watches golf cart. Village staff is not in support of the variance because staff believes that no special conditions or circumstances exist which are not applicable to other lands. The condition is the result from actions of the applicant and that granting the variance would confer on the applicant's special privileges that are denied to other lands. The literal interpretation of the code does not deprive the applicant of rights enjoyed by other lands in the same zoning district, and it is not the minimum variance necessary to allow reasonable use of the property. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. The applicant is here as well, if you have questions, if you have.
Yep, you are here, so if you'd like to.
I don't have a formal presentation, but I'll ask, I'll answer any questions that are necessary.
Please state your name.
My name's Randall Lives, I do reside at 10627 Misty Lane, Royal Palm Beach.
All I ask, the first question, is it, I know in the application, it was stated that the captain of the local watch is going to be housing this shed. What is the, what is the term of this captain?
So, in what manner? I am the, I am the neighborhood crime watch captain.
Is that a term? Is it a lifetime job? Is it?
It's until, I guess I no longer want to do it. I mean, I stepped up three years ago and I've been running, running neighborhood watch program pretty, pretty successfully, so I've also been able to get La Mancha and the Willows on board as well with organized crime watch.
Programs.
Programs, yeah.
The, so, and is this your golf cart, your personal property?
The golf cart would be my personal property. I haven't purchased it yet, only because I'm not 100% sure that the shed's gonna be allowed to stay. I don't want to make that, that type of purchase and have that equipment sitting out in the rain or anything, but it's for the sole purpose of the, the program itself.
Okay.
Totally support neighborhood watches, I think that's great that you're doing that. Have you guys in your community evaluated other locations for the shed?
Well, we did. We, we do also, would like to, and one thing that's been put on hold is also add a pool. So where we have the pool doesn't need to go, it doesn't give us access to get on the other side of the property, you know, you need about a five-foot or a six-foot lane to get in and out. So, I have a, I have a 18, 18-foot by 60-foot concrete slab that goes all the way back to the back, so that, it just was the, the best place. There was already an approved shed that was put there, and this one is butted right up next to it, I can't move it, you know, one more inch, so. It is a hurricane-rated shed, it's strapped in. So it meets the requirement as well. I also neglected it.
Yeah, skip, we got anybody here from the public that had any comments? You're the last man standing.
One of the neighbors, I got a letter. For my future property, but I didn't support Randall and his project. I've talked to him on various occasions about it, the more we talked, I said the crime watch can be in the neighborhood. Several neighbors have disclosed, surveillance cameras along the property.
Sir, can you come up here to the microphone, I'm sorry.
To the mic, great.
Thank you. If you could just state your name and address for the record.
Sure. My name's Dave Sager, I'm at 10559 Misty Lane, approximately within the 300-foot radius of his project. I do support his project for the crime watch. I believe our crime has been down significantly since we have started this program. We've had several meetings at the firehouse and at a couple of the community parks, large attendances have been, have been there, and I think it'd be great to have the card on my street, access to everybody that wants to use it or participate in the program. And I have no reason to, to see why it should be denied, being that it is on his property and it's not interfering with any other properties in the, in the area. And I know we did send letters out to myself and several other people, and I guess I'm the only one here that came to support it, so. The commission, I hope that you guys support this, too. It's for a good cause, and anything we can do to keep crime down in our neighborhood is a, is a big, big deal for us. You know, we work hard for our income, we work hard to maintain our properties, and we work, we like the area, we want to keep it safe, we want to continue enjoying our properties, so. That's about all I have to, to say, but other than, please approve this, this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a few follow-up questions. What's the proposed timeline for you guys for your neighborhood watch with the golf cart and any other, other?
As soon as I go in front of the commission, you know, providing it's approved here, and I go in front of the commission, it, I mean, it'd be done right away.
Question?
Go ahead.
I have a question for you.
Okay.
In this, I'm still new on the commission, right?
Sure.
So, in the past, for someone who wants to do something like this for a neighborhood watch or anything, would staff work with them to identify a better location that would meet code? To meet the needs of all?
In the, in the technical staff review meeting, which is where it goes before we bring it to you, and it has to get certified there, we did identify that there's a large open space in his backyard. However, this evening, he has identified that that is the location where his pool is, that he would like to build at a later date is to go, so. And he had mentioned that, you know, they needed the access on the, the other side of the property in order for the pool equipment and stuff to get back there to build the pool, so. I'm not sure if we were aware that at TSR, we look at a lot of these things, so, but I have no reason to doubt that he intends to put in a pool.
Thank you.
Jim?
I only have one concern. You are the captain, neighborhood captain watch now. What happens, and you're gonna have the golf cart on your property? What happens when you're not the captain any longer and this shed is there and the golf cart will not be there, God knows where it might be, or something like that? You know, addressing that issue in the future. Is there any way you could have gotten a smaller shed or something?
It is a pretty small shed.
And it's a smaller shed?
If I got a smaller one, a golf cart wouldn't go in.
Wouldn't go into it.
It's, and that was the reason we picked it, just barely the size.
And there's no place else, no other property? You don't have a clubhouse or anything like that in that area?
I sure wish. I don't even have a clubhouse to.
I don't know, you know?
You know, I don't even have a clubhouse approved to me have my meetings at. So, we have them in front yards, we have them in parks, sometimes a fire at a station, so we do what we can. I have over 375 members, you know, 375 homes that are currently out of the 1,000 encounters point estates that, that follow us and actively. I'm not the only, there is, there are two co-captains. I doubt seriously if they could house a golf cart once I left, providing I left. I don't have any plans to leave, I have children, grandchildren, I plan to stay right here, so. But I, I mean, I would, I would be willing to sign a stipulation if I left, I would get rid of the shed as well. I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Phillip?
Only question I have is if you put the shed in, then you want to put a pool in later? Or you have room?
Yeah, there's plenty of room for a, a smaller pool, yes, because this stuff is all set to one side. I don't know if we still have a picture of the property, but.
Yeah, it's up there. They have it on their monitors.
But the, the shed, both sheds were, were put on that side of the property to leave, to leave room for a pool addition.
I, you know, put this thing in, then you want to put a pool in, it's not approved because, you know.
I understand. Yeah.
Oh, I had.
Ray?
Yes, Randall?
Yes.
You're the watch captain for the neighborhood, right? Not to, to be confused with the COP, like the citizens.
Completely different. My co-captain is a, a member of COP as well.
Because I'm a past captain of another municipal for the COP, and we had a similar issue, so I'm trying to find out from you, because it sounds like this is a code issue. And what you do, the watch captain, is what you do personally to keep a. and what you do, the watch captain, is what you do personally to keep an eye on the neighborhood, right? So can you explain how you tied the two in? Because I'm not getting it.
So I'm, I'm...
No, because...
I'm a citizen.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just a regular citizen and who got tired of hearing everybody complain about the crime in our neighborhood.
Right.
And they actively asked someone to step up, I stepped up.
Because...
It's not official.
Yeah.
I do work directly with the PBSO here in District Nine.
And that's beautiful.
You know, Diane and I, we meet on a regular basis.
Diane Smith.
Captain Ajoks, I meet with him on a regular basis. And again, because ours was so successful, we were able to deploy the same, the same situation in, in the Willows and La Mancha. Tried to do Port of Soul, but they didn't want anything to do with it. But, so we currently are linked in with five other locations, some in Wellington, and we pass informational, it's, I mean, as far as a, an official program, I don't know that you can call an official program. We would have to go to Diane with Community Services and the PBSO.
And I have.
And Captain Ajoks to get some more clarification on that.
Because I fully support the neighborhood watch when it comes to, I'm extreme on that.
Full-time job.
Exactly. And I've done that, and I had other members in, in the COP, but I'm having trouble right now with the code part of it. In other words, the special privileges that, you know, what, what Kevin and the staff have brought up, so I was trying to give you a chance to, to tie that in. Why, why do you feel you're not getting the special privileges here?
Well, I, I don't feel that I'm not getting, so far, I mean, everybody that I've, I've worked with, it's been a long process.
Yeah.
Started in November last year.
Right.
Everyone here has worked with me, you know, gone, gone above and beyond to help me understand the rules and regulations, so I've tried to jump through every hoop that I could.
Yeah.
Just, just to get this done.
Okay. That's all I have.
This is, is one quick question. This is a property, this is a picture of your shed that they have up there now?
I don't see, that is the shed.
It's there, it's part of his application, yes.
That's correct.
And you do have a fence on the side of it? Have any of, have you talked to your neighbors about this?
Every single one of them, yes.
No problems, no issues, no concerns?
Not a single, most of my neighbors are members of my crime watch program, so they're not going to be too vocal against it, so.
How many?
I have not had any, any derogatory comments whatsoever, anything stating that, oh, that's no good. It's, it's got a regular roof, it's, it's shingled, it matches the house. If it stays, it'll be painted to match the house, it won't be an eyesore.
And just so you know, the purpose of sending out those 300-foot letters is if anybody objects, that they don't have to come to the meeting, they can send it back to the planning and zoning department with a little note that says, "I object," you know, "I live at such and such address," or whatever, and we would read that into the record. We didn't get any, we didn't get any of our notices back. There's nobody here to speak against it, so.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify. Okay, thank you.
So with that said, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve application 19-046 as is.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All abstained.